All right. Hey folks, we want to start with which? I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for coming. Sorry, something's late here, but it's been a busy, busy day, busy time of year. Kind of get going, get this done. I got a lot more to do here too. Priorities wise.
So we'll be out there by five before five?
I don't know, maybe about that. Maybe four hundred fifteen. We'll see how quick this goes here. All right. And have a good minutes to approve.
And then make a motion to approve the motion, it'll be sixteen. Sixteen, I'm sorry.
All fair, say aye. Okay. Payroll, payroll amount up, one hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Make a motion to approve payroll in one hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents. I'm sorry.
All fair, say aye. Thanks for all the good information.
You're welcome. Cole did all that.
I was saying it was twenty-five thousand, while he did not be. Did you see how it covered the cost? All right, so we had the amounts up. We need our mayor to see the payable claims accounts payable report amount of fifty-three thousand, ninety-three dollars and ninety-seven cents.
And I make a motion, we need our mayor to receive the payroll claims accounts payable in the amount of fifty-three thousand, ninety-three dollars and seventy cents.
All fair, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we have claims in the amount of eight hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-two cents. That's a big number. Why does this, why does that?
One of the things, we had quite a few grants that came in. And...
Past hold for term, which is a hundred sixty-four thousand dollars.
That's why, okay, so I would have stopped.
EMS to ambulance. It's a case of... Make a motion to approve the accounts payable payment in the amount of eight hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-two cents. Let's give a half second there.
All fair, say aye. Hi, Justin. Did you bring my tractor?
Tractor.
Oh, didn't see my response to you when you asked about the...
No.
About the check?
No.
Specifically, because they were looking at it to see if it was even feasible is to take the bridge from Briston there and.
Yeah.
And they decided not to go with the one down by Mansfield.
That's correct.
We do, so you can move it apart.
Yes.
So probably first part of this is for us to approve them to use that bridge in Briston and bring life back to it. Are you okay with that?
Yes, it needs to be someone who will take care of it.
When they, when the group was first created, they did it, they took care of it, but now it's really come into a really sad state. It's just gonna fall apart and fall great. It's coming for something, so.
Yeah, you don't want anybody walking on it right now. There's some pretty big holes and the.
So I'd make the motion to approve the transfer of that, of that bridge at Briston, the iron bridge at Briston to the Park Trails Alliance or Use All Trails Project. I'll second that. All in fair say aye.
Thank you.
You have a statement.
Thank you.
We have it.
And then also we'll be surveying stakes. Our intention is to put the trail across White Tilt Lane at the end of our property and then go either over the ditch or do a bench and have a little bit elevator over the road and run along the west side of White Tilt Lane down to reconnect to our property at the south end of that. We'll also be looking at, part of that is, I plan on including any drainage stuff, and I have talked to Randy about that as well, because we were looking at which side of the road to go on. There's standing water all along White Tilt Lane.
Right.
On both sides. We'll need to address, obviously, the side.
Go back to the.
Yes.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and so anything, we end up on the west side. I think that would be better because there's like two driveways and the turn to go up. Going over that would not be, make sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we will manage, also part of the design will be controlling all that drain, drainage and probably be going under White Tilt Lane and dropping it off into that holler and basically re, digging out that ditch and getting the flow right.
If you don't mind, and Randy also, I'm not giving someone else to speak to, but I know that R U C looked at moving their lines from one side to the other, which they did. This might include them in the conversation because they have fresh room holds. Now a couple years ago, Randy, you moved from one side of the road to the other. Do you have a problem there more?
Yeah.
My problem.
Yeah, and I've been in discussions with Chad on several, several things associated with the trail because he's been very supportive as well. Yeah, because it was like, if they could've just moved him about another five foot, it would've been really nice.
If you only known what we had.
Yeah, and I haven't asked him to move him another five foot yet, but, but then, but we're also, on the drainage issue, that's, we're gonna have to deal with that from all the way up by Cooper's and coming back through. And actually, I have a meeting to speak with them tomorrow. We're gonna be looking at a lot of that stuff and their concerns on the whole drainage issue as well as some other things. But yeah, we're moving forward with that as well.
Sounds good. We're, we're with you. Anything other than the bridge, would be easy to take action on today?
I don't think so. Like I say, it's primarily awareness that we're getting survey stakes in different places. The, like we talked about, the McIntyre Street, not really anything on Deer Run Road right now. I think that that pretty much covers it, just so that you know that we're out there surveying and where the stakes are.
I'd actually see the, see the spots that you're gonna have to use the right way, that you can't use the proper, to see where you have to come up and go back and what kind of things, how that's gonna work.
Yeah, and we can get the layout for that. Our plans right now, just for your information, is we got the first draw from the state, about $475,000. Our intentions are to get the design work pretty much completed, probably not the bridges, but everything else through the winter and actually start some of the work next year.
And how long do you have to?
We have four years to do it, trying to work it out in a three-year project, total project.
Your intention, it's gonna be a reason why I'm going all the way to you because it might come up.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, very good. All right.
Maybe I can get my tractor that way.
Thank you.
I think you guys do agree. Okay, Racking Property.
Nick's on here, but.
No, he told me he wasn't gonna be here. This is the gentleman, I read a letter from him a few days ago that felt that the property that now on my majors was transferred in error. And my advice to him was that, well, nobody's trying to take your property at all, away at all. And if errors were made, then they need to be righted. And our people seem to think that everything was done in the proper manner. So if you don't think that's right, then you probably need to get an attorney to get all the paperwork the others figured out. You come in and we'll work it out. We're not trying to steal White 's property. But next up, the opinion that that was probably done at a tax sale and that was probably transferred to the majors, that again, people are just going off the regulations. So that's what his letter is. And he said that he had an attorney in Terre Haute, and Nick just advised him to have this attorney connect him and we start down that process. Anything different that you had?
No, nothing.
Okay, so that's where we are with that. The gentleman's really upset. He's been pursuing a long time. He's, he's upset that this isn't really a high priority for us, but, and he had a letter from Karen Lewis when she was at the flat office. And then she stated in that letter that she felt maybe that was an error as well. But he felt, he felt that she had promised him things, but obviously, I mean, she can't make promises for the county what's been happening on. But she would've been a great source for information because she knew every piece of property, every inch in the county. So that's obviously gone. So we'll have to do this the best we can. The best way to do that is get the legal side involved and we'll sit down and figure this out and get it worked out. All right, John Dear, lease letter.
You're waiting till Randy's here on that?
Yeah, that's fine. Yep. Wallaby River Heritage Corps of Commission, we got their amendments there from their, their meeting. I need to, I don't know, I was meeting with Nisa Jones before. She's the new executive director of P C I. She's gonna be doing a wonderful job with the covered bridge. I feel, I feel that P C I is in good hands with her there, running the bridge festival, playing it all together. That's gonna be obviously a learning curve and an experience for her. And one of the things I don't recall, and you guys made it, I don't recall P C I attending to us at any point getting permission to use the square for the covered bridge festival. We know we need to approve those things, so it's a sanction activity and our insurance is, we'll cover those things. So I'd make the motion that we give a P C I commission to use the W P square, square out square for the covered bridge festival.
I'll second that.
All in fair say aye.
Alright.
That ways in the amendments, we've approved it. We knew what was going on.
You know, it's.
Yeah, not this year. I mean, it doesn't pass, but they always came over, but I don't, I can't say it was every year. And that's really the only reason that anybody needs to become.
It's your sure side.
It's your sure side, that's it. So we, we proved it. Okay, Travers Plain. And. Let's just get it here. Go with you.
Highway truck here with that call. It's only a truck.
Yep. Okay. I have not talked to Joint. Laura, I didn't put anything else on to you, but if, I don't know what day's Randy comes.
Thursdays.
So he'll be in this week?
Should be.
Will you make a note to ask him to make sure with Joint that our Wi-Fi for the covered bridge festival is up and running? And we'll need a password, a new password for that. We'll get.
They want a new one this time?
Yeah, we ought to have a new one every year, so just the vendors can log on and use it. Otherwise, everybody's using it around our space. So if he gives us a new password to start.
He does that every year usually.
Yes. So if he would take care of that, I'd appreciate it. That festival starts at eight, so if we could have it like the week before, that'd be great. We left it up, left it as it was, so kids could use it for schooling when they add the, at homeschool, the COVID, COVID stuff. So that's why we never changed it all last year. Usually we shut it off this year. We did just let it go and it turned out to be a good thing. All right.
So what day do you want that to be turned on?
I'd say a lot of people.
First of all.
Yeah, maybe October first would be good, yeah. All right, just for your information, at the moment, there is a, a task force, a strike team is called from the state down at the Fairgrounds. They are doing COVID testing and vaccinations. They'll be there till eight o'clock tonight, and they'll be there from noon to eight tomorrow as well. Our members are up, of course, so we're still three, most of the front here at 2.5, but we're usually a little behind. We have a high percentage of our folks that aren't vaccinated. And so the state has offered that help to, our, our unit is still running, we're still running out of the ambulance building and they, or two days a week, one evening, a week and one week in day a month. But this addition will may get others involved as well and get them vaccinated as well. And it's not that we push anybody to get vaccines or encourage you to get vaccines, but the science does show that 100% of the deaths now from COVID are unvaccinated, about 90% of the ICUs are unvaccinated, and about 85% of hospitalized are unvaccinated. I have a good friend that, her son's 36, and he all died from, from COVID and he was going to get a vaccine the next week, but he got it before he got the vaccine. He's on a ventilator, a rotating bed, and he's still in the vent, I guess, but he can't feed himself, so how that works, I don't know. But, but he's really weak, but he looks like he's gonna make it. That's a blessing. All right. I don't have any other old business. You guys got anything? I said that about checking. I haven't ever checked. I don't know if I'm gonna find it at home. I don't know. I didn't look. Ah, there is something. I got a request from D A R. They would like to put luminaries, you know, those bags with the lights on, on the square for the, for nine 11, 20th anniversary of nine 11 occurring. So I make the motion that we approve D A R using, having luminary displays for the 20th anniversary of nine one one minute.
I'll second that.
All in fair say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that's it. That's all I have. All right, let's go to Justin.
Oh, hold on. Should be pretty. So far, 74 inmates in jail right now.
And I know, I ask you this every time. You think I would have it by now? Ninety-something? How many, how many?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two, okay.
Of course, holiday weekend, they had a few more, but that's what's left that didn't bond out or get released, so.
Has the violent part panned out, slacked off anymore? Is it more just normal?
Seems, I mean, it seems normal now.
Okay, good.
But we have collected basically, or charged $105,192 for the year for DOC. We're averaging $11,688 per month. And we billed $10,998 for August. So just a little bit below what we're averaging, but it should be steady. It should end up about 200 grand at the end of the year.
Did you ever have anyone tested positive in the jail? Did any of you?
Finally, I don't, July, maybe.
Okay.
Had one, but never spread, so. Our reported collections, $11,485.77 for the various other fees. And we had two Tahos that were 2021 models. They're both built. One was finished last week and the one before was, I think, a couple weeks prior. They're just sitting there waiting on ships. So I don't know when the, when the ships will come, but.
Hasn't a lot of tail paper yesterday. They front they dug over is the chips. They're just so far behind.
Completely.
They can't get cars out on the lots for, they give money because of these ships.
There's a picture of the steel. I don't want to take color out, I can't be Tennessee. Thousands of big trucks sitting there. They can't go get on the ship.
And we're still in pretty decent shape, but yeah, hopefully it's.
What's that? How are you?
Uh, we're one jailer short right now, and then we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a dispatcher retire at the end of the year, so.
Have you retired for that jail area yet?
That just happened last week, so I don't think it's hit like the newspapers yet, but.
Okay.
And I don't, I'll check if we've been on Facebook yet. And I didn't talk to Laura, but we applied for a L C C grant for National Night Out. It should've been an amount of $8,000. I thought that it had been sent to the county, but. Wonder where we receive that. If we haven't yet, I'm just gonna see if we can get promotion or like a out-of-cycle check.
Yeah, all the money.
But it'll be a big bounce.
A hundred and something one minute?
Yeah, I might have to look them up.
And how, how much was the grand total?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
They thought that it got sent here already.
House cycle is not probably, I see no number, is it, too?
Yeah. The amount would be $1,901.87, but it'd be big bounce, fun house rentals. It's just there for a 25% deposit down before the event.
And what vendor is that?
Big Bounce Fun House.
I didn't ask you if you had any other house cycle checks you need us to approve. Did you have any?
Today's claim was just better than then.
I'd make the motion that we authorize an house cycle check, a big bounce, an amount of about $1,901.87. All in fair say aye.
Look, I can get that to you, Laura, so you have all the, the actual paperwork on the deposits, so. I just didn't know if it made it here yet or not. They thought it had, but.
When's that date you gave Justin?
Uh, September 21st, 5:08 PM at the Fairgrounds.
Who's the other reason?
But it's a Tuesday, so.
I can't even retire.
Yeah, you don't need to quit.
Your guys.
That's all I had.
All right. Nothing else you need from us?
Nope.
Okay.
Good evening, Jeff.
Are you, have you talked to Todd Payne down at Mansfield? I don't thought, apparently it's been difficult to pass. I didn't know him before, but he's been very cooperative here lately. He loves to do good down there. And if you had any needs before festival gets here, it wouldn't hurt to reach out to him, or I could reach out to him on your behalf and.
Brad McNeil, usually Brad, kind of always does Mansfield, so. I know Brad's talked to him here lately, quite a bit.
Okay, good. So the heavy deeds account, now I'm getting time to ask him because he's trying, he's trying to do right. We'll see if it works out. I talked to Randy about working on Roseville. He's trying to do right.
I think he picked up more property too, didn't he?
Yes.
On the other side of the creek.
He got all the Yorks, all the Yorks property and hilltops. He didn't intend to make it a destination, which would be good for the county, but.
Yeah, I think he's been pretty good so far for us, for working with us, so.
Good. Okay, that's his goal. He says, this is the law. I think he's, that's our right place, I think, so we'll see if that works out. Okay, thanks.
Oh, thank you guys.
Thanks, Justin. Randy? Randy, don't be quiet. Is he sleeping back there?
Trying to.
If I shut up, you probably.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe, maybe you might talk next.
That could be, yeah. No, I can go sleep by any time.
So we got contract, I mean, the, yeah, John Dear thing, yeah.
Or will they buy the grinders back?
This letter's confirmation, I hear lease contract is described below it, but it's sent by John Dear Financial and your county's setup. It's not an invoice.
Oh.
That's all I've got. Anything else? I did ask him to send us a letter just confirming what he said about the buyback.
Yeah, we haven't got that yet.
Okay.
Did you sign it?
Um.
The contract?
Yes. Well, Randy said he signed, so we're good to go. But the assurance we have from him, it was written. I mean, we're, we're assuming the buyback on, they're gonna buy the back at any time. But there's nothing that says that they have to buy that back. And then somebody say, no, we don't want to do this, so you're stuck with them. He promised us that he'd give a letter to us stating that, that, that will be part of his agreement, so.
I didn't recall, Mark.
Okay.
Remind him again.
Okay.
Well, I got the speed limits for Mansfield.
Good. I asked Randy, we had orangees down there. I think we did, but it wasn't for a.
We got no parking.
Yeah, no parking.
No speed limits.
No speed limits.
There is one 15 mile an hour speed limit signed down there. The white's there.
What's, what speed you put on your orange?
Ten.
Ten, yes.
Put it on all of them, ten.
Yeah, okay.
People are gonna die faster through there, but maybe overlook that until the festival comes in.
Right.
Uh, the first one's on Mill Road, starting at 59 and ending 0.318 miles northeast.
Okay.
That's up on top of the hill past.
Before you travel.
Yeah, before you get to the gravel.
Okay.
At 10 mile an hour. And the second one is on 620 South, starting at Mill Road, ending at State Road 59, 6.400 miles, 10 mile an hour.
Okay.
And the third one is starting at Martin Road, starting at County Road 620 South and ending at County Road 775 East, 0.327 mile, at 10 mile an hour.
Okay. You know where all those roads are, that's a back to the building in Mansfield on your side?
Yes.
Are these permanent, 10 mile an hour or temporary?
Permanent.
Permanent.
Yeah.
You said that they made it older to fill the festival. We talked about making it temporary, but that's just really tough, I think, to have to ask the police department to monitor that. Why D A J kicks in, why D A J doesn't, they're gonna ignore it anyway, the 10 mile an hour all the time, other than the festival. At least it's a festival, and we have something to enforce that. Makes sense still, do you?
Yeah.
We asked about that.
Otherwise, we have to go down, take the sign, track up.
Yeah, so.
Well, if that's the case, I would make a motion, the pastor would say this, 10 mile an hour speed limit, that is presented by Randy. All those three ordinance is.
Well, the same day, same meeting.
It's there too, on the back.
So let's do that first, then. So let's just change the initial motion to, ask the same day, same meeting for those three ordinance issues.
You go ahead. If you got any red ordinance numbers off the step.
You're gonna start at, what, 2021, oh eight?
So it's okay by changing motion like that?
Yeah.
Okay, so who's second to approve that? Same day, same meeting, or first you got that? Ordinance is 2021, eight, nine, 10, all in fair say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now we can put the ordinance.
I was just, I got the other motion we approved. Ordinance 2021, eight, 2021, nine, 2021, 10, which are the three speed limit allowances that just push those by, and on the center there.
All in fair say aye.
Fine.
Okay, thanks.
So. Laura, we'll make copies of them, give them to you.
Yeah, I'll do copies on the tab.
Oh, you want, okay.
So I need originals in our files.
Okay. Yes, well, we should, yeah, we'll, this one's. Shit, that's cold. All of our paving is done. Jeffries Ford, 275 South, and Wimmer Road. We started on Henry Road, doing the wedges and level, rope down, so hopefully get it fixed tomorrow.
Okay.
Get started again. We get work tomorrow and Thursday, we ought to have that rope done.
How far from Narrows all the way up to?
Just spots.
Just spots, okay.
Yeah, and they started up there just south of, oh, he was a deputy that got hurt.
Aubrey?
Aubrey.
Okay.
Started second quarter south of him, I think. I think there's seven or eight spots.
Yeah, it's good. Somebody mentioned today that hit on more, so I got that, it's pretty, pretty good, so that's good, good.
Never gonna ship and seal it after they get that done.
Okay. Todd, did you ever hear from Larry?
No, I haven't. I haven't, not old to him.
Okay.
I did have, I've heard that Briston does some comments on Chapter 4 about how they liked it. There's been least a thousand. Yeah, I've had a lot of compliments on that, too.
It does, and it's very smooth. I drove it the other day. And Atlas Road too, going out the, out the 41, that's your take too.
Yeah, we gotta get sealed. 800 South, where he asked me to broom from, the intersection back toward the bottom of the hill. We got that broomed off every day. And that's about it. Raiders are running.
Great. How about the brush, guys in the brush?
Not yet. Let's see when we get done the favor.
Money was coming up, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I got a couple things. If you're down, you, one thing, on Chapter 4, brother, when you guys ditched that, but everybody's in, who was cut? Is that P S I that cut all them trees and left them in the ditch?
I don't know who that was.
It's, it's either contractor works for, I went to mow school road last week, and I think it was Town Center, had cut a bunch of limbs because power keeps going off down there. They're like the limbs and everything, I got into them with, I mean, the ditches is completely full. There's one right before you get in the bridge there. But then all them ditches Randy just done on Jeffries Ford, and got all them trees hanging over and power lines. And they filled the ditches with logs and brush, and it's ridiculous. I don't know who we need to get ahold of to get it cleaned back, because all we're gonna do is just plug that.
That's, is that Duke?
Towns have been doing most of the work down towards Bridge.
Yeah, it's, it's ridiculous. I think there's a few truckloads of logs and, so we'll look at brush.
Do you have someone to contact there?
No, I don't, but I'll, I can find someone.
Okay, great.
I didn't know who done it, no.
I assume somebody.
I thought they had a landowner done it.
Because they're contracted then.
They're gonna pick it back up.
I can't imagine that. There's right there from Roger Center, there's cases, there's a mess of it. And then there's a mess of it right there before you get in the bridge there.
I think there's two, two full trees, or when I was down there last, two full trees.
Yeah, but before you get wrecked in road, there's a mess. And like I say, I had a mess at school road, ended up getting all bit cleaned up, that I couldn't chop up the bush on it. And I did get it mowed. The other thing is, I had a call, and I went down the road, it is, it was correct. There's about a half a mile stretch from 59 down to where it lies there with the county line. It might be called Coburn Road on that section. There's a dozen, I mean, a single axle with a scoop of black top or probably fixing, but there's a, they're deep chuckle, and probably, and that's the only section is just right there at the Y, where it lies off the county line and Rosedale Road, and there to 59. And that was the only complaint I had there on that section. But I was the one complaining about the ditches. It's ridiculous. Whoever Duke's paying to do that.
I'd assume that's Duke.
I think, I don't think that's R M C's line, is it? Isn't that a main transmission?
Down there, down there at the bridge, you know, you got R M C and Duke.
Yeah, but I think that's a main transmission line of Duke's that comes from over at the substation that just redone and cuts over. I don't think that's R M C line. And it's actually on the other side of the road, the trees that cuts on the sub you did.
She might call, check, change, and see if they'll tell you who called anyway, if it went.
Yeah. Well, Richard Stout probably telling too.
Very good.
Professional service guy.
Greg is out of Brazil. So just pay to turn them, clean them up, and clean up the mess.
Okay, I'll just make it over somebody.
Just put a ditch in. That's all I have.
Staff, you still, one down?
Yeah, one down, for right now. John's gonna be leaving the first October.
Right.
And then I still don't know about the other mechanic, Haley, will be replaced.
I haven't looked at the abutments of Mark there, too. That, that iron bridge sets on there, but I'm assuming it's on stones like the other abutments are? Do you anticipate taking the stones in the evening as well?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
For your information, those are gonna be bollards, basically, all along the trail or benches, blah, blah. So it's keeping that hisp because, from what I understand, those were all milled from the, were over by Mansfield originally.
So they did the.
You gonna replace those with riprap?
Yes.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, we'll.
Something we'll have to get.
You cut it back and put your tag on riprap down. And again, you'll, you'll see the plans on how we'll leave it before everything gets done.
Do you have any questions with him on the Roseville Bridge, about what you need to do there?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, we'll get started on it, and I'll just keep, keep getting going.
Okay.
If you go on Roseville, come down the hill, the bridge there, we'll cross that bridge back out of here. That's one of the problems I would be placing, you know, include a pedestrian.
You still playing.
Include a pedestrian.
I'm not sure what they're doing, and they don't know yet either.
So our only allegations do what we're going to give them, and they would have to walk away that way, no trails. Anything I've read?
I didn't hear you.
No, no, I thought you were.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Oh, I was just asking, do you have anything else for us?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Park Professional Services, Greg Hayes. Oh, yeah, Greg Hayes, yeah. I don't have his number, but I got Richard's.
Okay.
I'm sure Chad could tell you. You got it quick, it's a lot, but all the time you have for insurance.
Yeah. Okay, you guys have a good evening.
Cindy, you got something?
No.
Really? Really?
I asked you, I think you did say something about it.
I'm just gonna ask you what, can I ask?
Just because S-T-E-C-H-L-Y.
I just, I'll throw a question, or something, I feel like we're gonna have a few guys, Hayes off the road, so I can just bear with that.
All right, that's good, keep it, good to know, keep in mind.
What?
You said, is that, is that your program?
You said it was a little client center, people, over 2,000?
Oh, from off Billy?
No, the psychic event is, incident that happened.
On your emails, you just said client, so...
That's all, no. You just, it was going, okay, to help the situation, that's like...
Kind of deal.
Okay. So, you have any motion we got, Jerry?
I said...
Okay, we're done.